At this time, we will begin the Adrian City Commission work-study session for July 3, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
Present.
Commissioner Help.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry Slay. Commissioner Goss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Castleberry.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get going on the scheduled items on the agenda, I want to also talk about an issue related to our upcoming strategic planning session, which is now this month. It's currently scheduled for the 21st and 22nd, which is a Friday evening and Saturday morning. The plan for that is that you and I will, not you and I, but the commission and I will be in a session Friday night, and then we'll be joined by the department heads Saturday morning. That's the way Lou Bender does his sessions. However, two of you have expressed an interest in having a community survey ahead of that time, so you've got a couple of options. I did talk about that with Lou. As I said in my weekly report, I would say he was ambivalent about that. When there's a, and for him, it depends on the experience level of the commission. An inexperienced commission, he would not want that to be done. He would want you to focus on your own thinking about goals. But you've got kind of a mixed level of experience. Some of you are very experienced, and so he felt all right with it. You need to understand how he's going to conduct the session to, I guess, opine on this. He will ask you, when you get to your strategic planning session, to do, to identify three to five goals, and no more than that, three to five, and then work on a strategy related to each of those goals. And so it occurred to me that we could do, however, he has time in August, so we don't have to try to do it before July. His availability in August are the last two Friday, Saturday combos in August, so I was pulling up my calendar here. If anybody beats me to it, shout them out. But that would be the 18th and the 19th, or the 25th and the 26th, if you wanted to put it off till August. However, we have time to do something before your session, if you want to go that route. It occurs to me that the real the question would be the same for that survey as it's going to be for you, right? What are the three top issues or most urgent issues or most important issues facing the city of Adrian right now? Or you could say five, but I think if you say three, you know, the other two will fall into place if you end up choosing to go with five goals when you get into your session. And so I want to, want to discuss with you now, because that's, I need to let him know tomorrow which direction we're going to go. He won't keep those dates open forever. Whether you would like us to try to do that in advance of the July 21st session, or, and if that's how you would like me to do it, if you concur that you would like me to do it in that fashion, or if you want to try to put it off to August, and if so, whether all of you can attend on one of those two weekends that I indicated. So throw that out for everybody to discuss.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with doing something in the short term, but just the one date, if the majority of the commission do want to go that route and postponing it, I am not available the 18th and 19th of August, and there's no getting around that. I have a family vacation, and I'm not, I'm not missing that, so. But the other date does work for me, but the 18th and 19th, I'm out of the city, so.
I'm perfectly comfortable going forth with the scheduled dates. I think a one-question list of priorities will accomplish what we hope to accomplish. I think we get along involved whenever, we've done those in the past, and I mean, you get a whole wide range of everybody from, you know, law enforcement, you know, blight, give us a Costco, you know, you get all kinds of stuff. So, yeah, I think, I think if we've got time to do a one-question survey, get it out, you know, before the end of the week, and two weeks to, you know, to respond, that, that works for me. I mean, I think we all agree that the dates in July would work for us, so, you know, changing that, it may be problematic.
A survey is fine. I know when I spoke with Lou in your office, you know, I could tell that he, he wasn't always, he didn't use a survey in most of his past experiences in the strategic plans. There was just a handful of municipalities that used a survey. But I believe when we brought his contract to, to our attention in the first pre-meeting back in May, Commissioner Help suggested, and I also suggested that, you know, a survey, you know, it, yeah, we, we can hear from the city. My, I think a one-question survey is fine for the July meeting. My only question is how do we ensure it is only city residents answering?
Well, I mean, you can ask two questions, right? Are you a resident? And then the other question, but you still don't ensure it. I mean, you're not going to ensure it. What you hope for in any survey is that you get a statistically significant sample size, so that, you know, it doesn't really matter. But in some degree, it doesn't really matter. If people identify as being a resident of Adrian, even if they actually live in the township, you know, their concept of the issues may be very similar to somebody who's not, but you know, you can't be 100% sure. You can ask the question, you know, and, you know, it's kind of a gateway question, and then, of course, the answers don't count it if they're not a resident of the city, if, if you want to set it up that way.
I don't know that I want to set it up that way, but I would like to delineate between city of Adrian resident answers and those who might live in Madison or Adrian Township and have an Adrian address who think that they live in the city of Adrian for, for some things. So I just, I would like to know who's answering that's a city of Adrian resident and who's not.
Would it make sense to have the first question be, where do you reside? And give them city of Adrian, Madison Township, Adrian Township, other? I mean, that would sort it out a little bit, it would seem.
You'd be surprised. Some folks don't know any more than what their address is.
Well, and if they, they're 49221, they think they can vote in the city elections.
Right, right. We, we encounter that with some frequency, but, you know, we could, you know, we can for sure make a, a threshold question, a gateway question like that as part of the survey.
So Greg, how will it be done? Will it be on our website, via Facebook?
Well, we'll do, set it up on Survey Monkey. We have a Survey Monkey account. We'll set it up on there, and then we'll have the link available on the website, on Facebook, and we'll push it out other places. We've got a first Friday between now and then, so we'll try to push it out at the information booth, farmer's market, so on, so that, like, it's good exposure.
Perhaps the news media can help us with that, too, with their Facebook posts.
We will most assuredly do a press release. Other comments on that? I see Commissioner Castleberry coming in. Maybe we can get for a second to get settled and opine on that as well.
I know. I would prefer to keep it in July. We've already had it set. I also have the same exact weekend conflict as Commissioner Help as well, so I, I feel like it's good to do it now, and I feel like the one question, you know, just, I, I really felt in the pool study that it really did give us a lot of great insight to hear what everybody was wanting, and, and, you know, we can't accommodate all of those, but it was, it was good to see that and look at that, and I know, you know, that was used when they were, you know, putting together the plans, but it was just good for us as well, just to see that. Moving forward, this is what the public wants, and I think that would be great to hear from them.
Mr. Castleberry, I mean, we started out with the discussion of the strategic planning session and the idea of doing a one-question survey, or maybe two-question, are you a resident? And then what do you identify as the top issues facing the city right now? Or try to do that before the July 21st meeting, or there is the last weekend, last Friday, Saturday combo in August, that would also be available for Lou. Pretty much everybody so far wants to just stick with July and do it in the intervening time here. Any comments? Okay, all right, thanks. All right, that's what we'll do then. Moving on, so our first scheduled item tonight was the Human Relations Commission ordinance. So as you may recall, we were charred, we you had a joint meeting with the Human Relations Commission. It was decided that a committee consisting of members of each would convene, take a look at the ordinance, and try to look at the role of the Human Relations Commission and come up with a more relevant and productive role, giving them good direction as to how they would handle their meetings and affairs, what they would focus on. And so that group has met three times, as I recall there. The group consisted of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, Commissioner Help, the chair of the HRC, Andrea Bernard, and the vice chair, Joaquin Ramos. So we started out talking about that task, and then went about actually going through the language of the ordinance and marking it up as it related to those items. And then last week, we got together on Thursday with a red line that I had created for you of, of the items that you discussed, and those that were able to attend last Thursday were in accord that those, that represented the thinking of the group. So we went ahead, since we had time, and the packets hadn't gone out, we went ahead and put it on the agenda for discussion tonight, so that you could begin a discussion of that revised ordinance. Since that time, we got a, an email from one of the members of the HRC who pointed out that there was a distinction between the language in Article 3 of that chapter related to the scope of our efforts as it relates to non-discrimination, particularly as it relates to sexual preference and gender identity. That language was lacking in the, in the HRC portion, which is Article 2 of that chapter. HRC portion was written in 2002. The non-discrimination ordinance was written in 2014, hence probably the difference, but they never harmonized those two at that time. And so, you know, it probably makes sense to make them consistent as well as part of the separate. I'll just throw that out there for you to talk about as well, but with that, we'll open it up for comments from the commission.
I have some comments to make about this. Regardless of our political stance, the now abandoned, some places poem book by Amanda Gorman, "The Hill We Climb," has some poignant phrases discussing justice. The first time I heard it, I was swept away with Miss Gorman's sentiments. I agree with her that we are not a country broken. We are a country unfinished. I'd also believe we must be strong enough to look for, look for and be the light. If not, MLK Junior warns, "Returning hate for hate multiplies hate, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars." Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Municipal government is made up of seven persons, and that we do not have the capacity to completely change culture. Culture is changed by the people, a community of people committed to favorable evolution. Change does not happen when hate and personal attacks are thrown at commissioners, city employees, or other persons. We, as a commissioner, people that volunteer and truly care about our community and want to make positive change. We do not work with a personal agenda, but are guided by the greater good for the whole of our people. In most human form, working for our city, in our most human form, excuse me, working for our city does not make us infallible. Degrading does not help. Graceful conversations build bridges and strong communities, and I've been lucky enough to have many of those with people sitting in the room today. The Human Relations Commission has been a conversation we've had multiple times. As it has not left my mind in quite a while, I am questioning the threshold issues and the capacity for productive work. What are we accomplishing and what are our expectations? Who is it we are really trying to help? What has been accomplished that has not been accomplished by an outside NGO and done well by that NGO? We have Lean, Lean, excuse me, the M Society, the Continuum of Care, the Lenaway Anti-Trafficking Coalition, the Ancient Order of Hibernians, many local churches, the NAACP, Associated Charities, Salvation Army, Habitat for Humanity, Goodwill and Boys Club, and that's just to name a few. Some of our most recent discussions have been to try and provide stronger direction for the HRC. That happened through multiple meetings and review of the ordinance to discuss direction and action. That was the first step in the rewriting process. Because of the Open Meetings Act, we, as a commission, are not allowed to meet and discuss this outside of an open forum. So here we are today to discuss the first rewrite and challenge each other to assure, excuse me, the first rewrite and challenge each other to assure we are not missing anything. Myself, as the executive director of a pretty large NGO, and someone with 20 years of experience working in social justice, is my opinion the commission should repeal Article 2 of Chapter 38 of the city ordinances. I also believe we should affirm and update Article 3 of Chapter 38, our anti-discrimination ordinance, to include state and federally updated languages. If you review Article 3 of Chapter 38, you will see that the city may place a civil sanction of up to $500 on a violation of the stated article. It also states the city will rely on state and federal legislation before issuing one of those citations. We have ordinances that are not serving the people. We should be utilizing the state and federal civil rights legislation to build positive change in our community. We do not create positive change by writing words and arguing at a dais or a table. We do this by, as Harvey Milk said, "We set examples so that others will follow, and we can start overnight." I believe we can be the boots on the ground, changing a life one gesture at a time. As we discuss this topic, I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider if this is the right time to maintain the Human Relations Commission. We have multiple NGOs that are boots on the ground. So many groups and clubs that are in our community making a difference every day in multiple ways. The real insight comes from being in the moment. From experience and work done in the trenches, these are the people that we need to reach and hear. They do not work to be recognized, but to spend each day working to change lives. Clearly, I'm a quote person. I use them for insight and inspiration every day, and here's one by Bryan Stevenson, the attorney depicted in "Just Mercy." I think sometimes when you're trying to make a difference, when you're trying to change the world, the thing you need to do is get close enough to the people who are falling down, get close enough to people who are suffering, close enough to people who are in pain, who have been discarded and disfavored, to get close enough to wrap your arms around them and affirm their humanity and their dignity. I urge you to consider ways in which we can truly meet the needs of our community. Again, municipal government made up of seven persons does not have the capacity to completely change culture. Culture is changed by the people, a community of people committed to the betterment of all. I have to write that down. I get very emotional about this, so I had to write it out.
Well said.
I guess, I don't know where we go from here, I guess. Be on a city commission for seven and a half years. I've made some significant decisions. Some will agree, some will disagree. But I feel like this situation, as we speak tonight, is déjà vu. This weekend was tough for me. Saturday was very difficult for me in my position. Trying to help people understand how the process works can be very dragging. I made this very clear, that our board should be working with us, not against us. As the only black elected official in the county, no matter what people say, I am not a white presenting millennial. I'm actually a black Gen X, 43-year-old man, I'll be 44 this year. I feel like I have to come to defend my colleagues. I feel like I have to, when the assault is on, I am the one that has to speak up as the token on the board, okay? It is not fair to them. It's not fair to me, and, and, and I have learned a lot. I, I've, I've got a lot of good friendships that will last forever in the city commission when it comes to dealing with policy. But I am exhausted by trying to explain how things work up here. When a candidate running for political office tells me in my business that they've had two non-70 votes in their, non-70 votes in their leadership positions, that tells me that that entity and that board is not transparent either. I will never make decisions up here based on an election. I've been here a long time. What was everybody in this room doing in 2015? Because that's when I started, okay? And again, I don't pander for votes either. I think this is a serious job, a job that I am dedicated to, a job that I can look back on in my time, if it's in November or after, and understand that, that I did the best job I could possibly do. I've got a business. I've got two young kids that I am a single dad that has them full-time, and I still make the city a top priority. I'm over this. I'm over this. I am prepared to support that, Commissioner Castleberry, and then work with the agencies that are in town that are looking for positive change, because right now I can't fight anymore. I can't. And, 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 and I feel bad for my colleagues that I have to always be the one that has to sit up here and, and, you know, and defend it when they're being called racist, when they're being called adopting systemic policy. It's not fair. We are local people. We have a photographer. We have a nonprofit leader. We have a, we have, we have a mayor that serves our district. We have somebody that works for our local agencies, colleges, universities. We, we got a guy working for Sienna, or, or working in, you know, in our theater, our community, and we get attacked. I understand that we signed up for this, but this particular issue, I want advocates on our boards, not activists, because we are a team, and right now, this is not team. And again, I will be the token one up here as the only minority in the county, pretty much. I will be the one up here to make that, you know, you know, to support Commissioner Castle, because it's not just her. This is a very tiring job. It's rewarding, but to be mentally beat down and to have a gallery full of people because of a campaign, I won't tolerate it. I won't. And if whatever happens in November happens, then I will support the city 100% regardless, but going forward, I cannot, I cannot support the HRC, and I support repealing it.
Other thoughts? Obviously, we can't take any action at the work session, and so what we're talking about is what we would do potentially at our next meeting. This is, it exists by ordinance, and so whatever we're going to do, whether it's move forward with the language proposed or a repeal, that would be, that would also be an ordinance, and so would require, John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it would require two readings of, an ordinance change to address that.
I'd like to say that I support Commissioner Castleberry, Commissioner Help on this issue. I was one of two commissioners at the time that the HRC was, was brought back, and I think we probably at that time brought it back for the wrong reasons. The board has never probably served the purpose that it was originally thought that it would. I know that that the HRC had Lady Bernard and, and Joaquin worked with the commission on this rewrite, and I appreciate that, and and I think both groups did a good job. And then when I hear that from some that we didn't do a good job, that then I, that's, it gets me thinking that, you know, maybe these problems aren't going to go away. There have been a number of issues over the last, whatever it is, five years or so. And I started to think, you know, we're the only city, you know, in the county that's having these issues. Now, I want to right off the bat say that Lenaway County, the county of Lenaway in Adrian, should be leaders, but at the same time, I don't see other cities having this issue, okay? Also, why would we try to govern situations that the state and the federal government have more, more authority? They have, they're, they're better equipped to handle these kind of injustices. And so I'm not trying to say that there aren't injustices in Adrian or Lenaway County. That'd be foolish. But I don't think that we're equipped to do that. I also, I feel like the this whole, there have been many political issues that have come out of this, and you know, when, when I ran for the city commission eight years ago, a former commissioner said to me, "If you like the way city government, if you, if you want to learn about city government, you'd probably like being a commissioner." And that's been true, and I've loved that. But some of the, the politics that goes on is, is not for me, and it's not for most people who want to run for city government for all of the right reasons and not reasons that are self-serving, I should say. So at this time, I, I feel like we're better served just keeping a hold on the HRC. Maybe at some time in the future, it could be looked at again, but I don't see any reason to move forward with it right now. I think that what Kelly Castleberry said was, was very elegant, and and I don't really have the words right now to to say what she said, but I feel like we should put a halt to things with the HRC at this point.
I'm going to chime in and just say I don't know how to feel about this right now, and I think that we'll need to, I mean, as we do with all ordinances, come to, to readings, and that will take over a month, and by the time it comes up for a vote, I will know what I, my thoughts and feelings on this, and hopefully hear from residents. I appreciate that I, I love what Joaquin has done and said with the East Side. I really, really do. Madame Bernard, all of the work that you've done. I just learning really about this in the last year. We all have our lanes. We can't, we can't be a part of everything. I was really interested in the Planning Commission, so that was my focus. I did not focus on the HRC the first couple of years that I was here, and that's the honest truth. You just only have so much time in the day. So I, I think that I'm going to have to take some time, but I would really like to discuss more with the colleagues about how this is going. I'd like to, I mean, it was gone for a number of years, and it came back, so was, did all of the NGOs take care of everything during that time? And maybe that's what we let them do again, is go back to having all of the local agencies deal with issues that are, are concerns and not having the city be a part of all of it. I don't know if that made any sense at all. But, yeah.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Roberts. I think we need more time to consider it. Frankly, I would be disappointed if we had to do away with the HRC. I think they do some good work. But I think we need, as Commissioner Roberts said, more time to think about it. I know a lot of people are here upset about the proposed changes. What I've been telling people, because I've talked to a lot of them over the weekend, as Commissioner Health said, it's going to be very tiring. But again, that's what we signed up for. But I think that I keep reminding people that it wasn't that long ago that we were dealing with street closures, parades, fees associated with that. We didn't make that decision in one night. We got a proposal, we considered it, we talked about it. We sent Mr. Elliott back to do more work on it. He came back another meeting, new proposal, some of the changes that we had asked for. And we sent him back again, and it took us three meetings and three different proposals to come up with the right answer. And as Commissioner Castleberry said, you know, we're, you know, we've got a lot of things to look at, we've got a lot of things to consider. I've talked to, I don't know, five or six people over the weekend. And I'm sure that, I mean, I agree, I'd like a little more time to continue to talk to people, talk to our fellow commissioners, and really give this the consideration that it needs before we make any final decisions.
Other chemistry thoughts? That would probably not be a productive use of our time at the moment. Keep them, keep, hang onto them, don't lose them. Would the commission like me to put a repeal ordinance on the agenda for next time, so you can continue that discussion? Do you want to not have anything on the agenda next time and revisit this at our next pre-meeting? What's your pleasure?
My opinion is there would have to be some significant changes for me to even consider reading, being a part of the draft ordinance. Like I said, I had, I had a weekend, and again, I've had this gallery full of people multiple times over the seven and a half years, and I've never and the thing is, you know, like I told some others, I'm not going to let my colleagues get attacked based on a process that all cities use, is that's to operate in a transparent fashion and not to do things behind closed doors. So what should we to help, you know, to help that perception and to look like we're unified all the time? Or do they want public discord? That's, in my opinion, government's about public, healthy, respectful discord. It's not about, you're right, I'm wrong. You know, I get on social media, I rally a bunch of people to come, when really it's just a discussion. Like this is literally deja vu of what happened the first time. And so, again, as the guy that can sit up here freely and speak when it comes to race or any of these kinds of issues and not have the label put on me is that it is not productive. And it's an easy fix, it's an easy fix, but, but what's the next thing? That's what I'm concerned about, and we have the city's business to tend to. And that's what I, that's what I signed up for, is to do the city's work.
Yes, please put it on the next agenda to repeal the ordinance, and that will give us a decision. I mean, we have to decide. I mean, that'll be the first reading, and then the second reading, and at least we're moving forward and not in this quagmire that we've been in for the last six, seven, eight months.
So anybody that would not like that. Right, hearing none, that'll be our plan, and move on with our pre-meeting at this point. So Commissioner Gauss asked for an update on the revolving loan fund. Somewhere here, I have something to pass out. So the fund is now funded, if you will. We've started our new fiscal year as of the beginning of this month. So we set aside, as you'll recall, $250,000 for this purpose to get it started. We've done some background investigation. Glenn and Leslie went to Jackson and spoke to their community development department about how they administer a somewhat similar fund. It's a little bit different in that they use odd money for theirs. This is our own money, we have greater flexibility in how we can use it. But the first task, it seems to me, as we get this up and running, is eligibility criteria for participation in the fund. And so I've drafted something that, I apologize, you're seeing for the first time tonight, but again, it's for us to discuss, that I think would be an appropriate set of criteria. I looked through Jackson's, it's very similar to theirs. Maybe not quite as restrictive as theirs is, and there's a distinction that I'll get to as I go through it. But just to walk through it, and for the benefit of those here, these are the basic criteria that I'm suggesting. Of course, open to your thoughts on it. One, obviously, that the property be located in the city of Adrian. Two, property be owner-occupied and not contain more than two dwelling units. So we have situation many times or on occasion where you have an owner-occupied duplex. And so that would be what I was contemplating there. But also, as we go into the future, it may be that we'll have accessory dwelling units attached to owner-occupied housing. And so that likewise might be a property that would be eligible for this. Two, that only residential property is eligible, and the property must be zoned for residential use. And the reason why I say zoned for residential use is because that goes to what the long-term intention for the property is, and we don't want to be at least using our resources to invest in property that isn't intended to remain residential in the future. Four, that the property be impacted by the code enforcement process, and the funding request must be used to resolve the related issue. Any unrelated issues must be rectified before qualifying for assistance, such as accumulated junk on licensed vehicles, et cetera. This is the key distinction between what Jackson does and what we're proposing. To me, this is to aid our blight remediation effort. And so where code enforcement has cited a property owner for the condition of their home, and we'll get to the eligibility criteria in a moment. But when they meet the income eligibility criteria, when they meet the income eligibility criteria demonstrating a difficulty in resolving those issues themselves, then this tool is intended to be there to assist them in doing that. And that leads to number five, which is that the owner's household income may not exceed eighty percent AMI adjusted for household size. Six, that all property taxes must be current, and the owner must not be in default to the city. Seven, that the owner must have clear and marketable title as evidenced by the records of the Lenawee County Register of Deeds. Eight, that the owner must be current on mortgages or other loans secured by the property. We don't want to invest our funds, and because we're not going to have, in that case, a first-position mortgage. We do envision having security interest in the property, but it won't be first-positioned in most cases. And so we don't want them already in default and way underwater with their lender, so that we're just essentially flushing the money down the drain, because it's going to be lost in foreclosure. And then nine, that loan recipients must execute a promissory note mortgage secured by the premises for which the loan is intended. And all persons with an interest in the property must execute the mortgage. That's just, you know, a matter of law, that that's necessary to create the security interest. So that's what I came up with. I mean, if you have thoughts tonight, I'm very interested in hearing them. I understand if you may not, really just trying to check in with you and get the discussion going on this point. So put that out there for discussion.
I think this is exactly what we need. This is a kind of parameters and guidelines that we need to start with to get this off the ground. This is perfect, especially with your look at the other cities that are doing similar things. This is, this is exactly what we need to put forth. Everyone can understand this, they understand what the needs are, it makes sense, perfect.
I do have a question about the qualifications, accumulated junk on licensed vehicles, et cetera. What if that is their blight issue? And they're trying to pay a company to come and help them clean up the outside of their property? Is that something we would allow?
Well, my proposal is no, but you can, I mean, that's fair game certainly for discussion. The, as I envisioned it, and then we'll get into this as we talk more about the program. You know, we're going, I would think that we're going to be the ones taking bids and selecting a contractor to do the work and obviously making the payments. Things that don't need professional expertise to address, you know, it seems like those don't rise to the level of use of these funds, they're limited funds. And, you know, my proposal for you is that we restrict them to things that are really, that they're really needed for.
They're, so it's more structural?
Well, I wouldn't say structural, some of the things are cosmetic, but they are things mostly to do with the structure.
Right.
Property maintenance kinds of things. Yes, maintenance of the structure. I mean, the classic thing is scraping paint, right? Nine times out of ten, that's what it's going to be, or a new roof, or a porch railing, or something of that nature.
I appreciate you put this information together and putting it on the agenda tonight. I've gotten a lot of questions, I've had my own questions. I think it's important, after we've talked about it several times in the past, that we move beyond the discussion and move forward as quickly as we can. I'd like to also soon discuss, in addition to the guidelines, what the real process is, what do the applications look like? Do we have them in, you know, in multiple languages? You know, how long is it going to take to turn this up? The reason I'm concerned about it is it's summertime, now is the time when the work ought to be getting done and not waiting until having a revolving loan fund in December and having to wait, you know, another three or four months for the snow to melt and people can start to do the work again. So I'd like to see a timeline as to when we've got the documents ready, how we've got the process set up and ready to go. I'd like to know who's going to actually administer the process and the granting of the loans. I think there's still a number of questions that need to be answered, but I'd like to get them answered sooner rather than later.
Any other thoughts tonight? We'll work on giving you those answers, Commissioner Gauss. Thank you. All right, well, Mayor, that's all I had for this evening, so we have plenty of time left for other topics, if anyone has one, or moving into public comment.
At this time, we will begin public comment. We will start inside the chambers first, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute timer limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Bob Benke, 256 Ironwood Drive. I'm going to start with forgotten, overlooked, unvalued, expendable, disposable, cut and run. The proposal that we had sent to us as members of the HRC was to adjust one line, and it said, "Problems arise in between groups in the city which may result in tensions, discrimination, or prejudice on the account of race, creed, national origin, ancestry, sex, age, height, weight, familiar status, or physical limitation." If you compare that list to the most recent updated Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, there's a group missing. And that group is the LGBT community. And the addition that I sought was to add LGBTQ to that line. And instead, I have a commission in front of us that wants to end the Human Relations Commission. Now, while I represent and am members of multiple organizations, and we found that we can act much quicker than government, and sometimes for you to say, "This is too hard of a job, this is too hard of a work for us to come together and do what the HRC is intended to do to address the tensions that exist in a city." Because as a commissioner, most recently, I was told I was a leftist pedophile. I was reminded of an email from a business owner that said, "The fags are taking over." And I was most recently told that I should be happy to live in this country, because at least they don't throw gays off of roofs. That's the hard work. When Mr. Strayer says, "We don't have these tensions in any other city." Those are tensions in the city of Adrian right now for a commissioner that's running, being called a pedophile. When I spent my entire career trying to stop sexual abuse of students. I will end with a quote from MLK that says, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends."
My name's Sakura Sevilla, I am the president and founder of the M Society. I'm also the owner and operator of Hilltop Counseling. I came in with the intention of saying something very different, though I was pretty upset by some of the things I'm hearing up here. There's frustration that there isn't a need for an HRC, though many of you have heard from me individually about homophobia. I've heard from the people sitting right next to you in those very seats on more than one occasion in the city. On more than one occasion, I'm hearing backbiting. We've had increase in white supremacists in this town, we have brought it to attention, only to be pushed aside. Within the past few months, I've received death threats from the job I do and the people I serve. I get continuous threats about that type of thing. Again, because of who I am, called a groomer, a pedophile, and this isn't just from outside our community. So these are issues that are still problematic. Race is still an issue, and I understand what you're saying. As someone who grew up different, and in this, I didn't grow up here, and I've seen this in various communities. When I moved here, to be openly gay, moving from a bigger place means giving up rights here. We do not have the same rights. My organization has only been around for two years, and I have been making progress here. And we have had to fight for every little bit, and part of the reason is because when I came here, it was devastating to me how far behind the times we are here. And I am working to bring us up to modern times. And to say that we don't have those same issues, we do. We have massive issues. I can't even get employees, because people who are part of my community, people who are not white, do not even want to live and work here. I lose employees and I cannot get them. So if there is not an issue, please enlighten me, what is going on? How do we fix this? Because the issue with the HRC, I've watched it back and forth, they're incompetent. Oh, please deal with police complaints. Oh, no, they're not competent. Oh, here, deal with any complaints regarding our nondiscrimination ordinance. Oh, wait, but you're incompetent again. And it feels like there hasn't been a lot of guidance. These are issues that are important, and these are issues that need to be heard. And you are the ones who have been elected, who are paid to address these things. And so if there's not guidance for the HRC, then let's fix that. And if it's all this fighting, then we all need to grow up, be civil, we don't have to be friends. Thank you.
I too think of Brian Stevenson.
Can you just state your name and address?
Ben Negron, 159 North Madison, Adrian, Michigan. And thinking about Brian Stevenson, and thinking of the Human Rights Commission. And oh, if he would have had the benefit of
And oh, if he would have had the benefit of that support in Alabama, when the injustices that were going on long after the Emancipation Proclamation to innocent citizens, how many souls would have been saved from being lynched legally in the United States of America? Brian Stevenson also says, we tolerate indifference. We tolerate biases. Nineteen ninety four Washington Law Review. He never quit. The Center for Justice there serves a massive good for the people, the people, not our people, not your people, as was stated earlier today, our residents, the residents of the city of Adrian. Sometimes the optics need to be considered. Is this the city I want to be involved in? To do the great work that my team and I and others sitting in this room today are doing? Don't quit. Don't quit the residents of Adrian. Try another way. Try a third option. Brian Stevenson didn't quit. Thank you.
Hello, Keen Ramos. I actually have a couple of topics covered. So first, do with the HRC. I am very disappointed that the thought is just give up on it, especially after all this time. I've dedicated quite a bit of time to this, as have many of you, and I find it very disappointing that instead of trying to contain the conversation, we're considering appealing. So I hope that cooler heads will prevail and they will reopen this conversation. And of course, I understand the frustration with how slow the process is. As many of us are familiar with government are quite familiar with, it's quite slow, but that's also part of the idea of allowing more time to speak and get some of these issues dealt with. And this would have been a first discussion as has been brought up. Usually this takes numerous meetings. So I hope that there is still time to talk. Hello, disappointed with the quick reaction and hopefully we can do better in the future. I would also like to talk a little bit about the revolving loan. I'm very excited to see that happen. It's a great tool in a lot of communities to help people deal with some of those blight issues, but also deal with some other house and property issues that might be needed. So I hope that you will look at more than just maintain the building because there's certain issues with the property such as it dipping a bit too low or there being certain unstable trees. Those could also become maintenance issues later on, as could certain things. And part of the idea of this is to remediate blight and to help our citizens. I think that we can allow it to cover a few more things. I look forward to seeing both these discussions continued. Thank you for your time.
Andrea Bernard. I am Adrian resident. Was trying to compose myself to address you. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be a part of this Human Relations Commission, whoever voted to have it back. I've been fighting for years for it to come back, but not the way that it came. However, I'd just like to say to all of you, looking on the outside of a group is different from being on the inside. We have worked to do things that no other city that I know of, that I've been a part of over the years, over forty years, have ever asked us to write anything. But this HRC, we started off writing not only the bylaws, helping them with the ordinance, helping to put together things that we were looking for guidance for. No one just failed us. They just did not believe we needed to be. When you don't believe a person should exist or you don't give them space to belong or be a part of a community especially, then you let them know by your words and your actions that they are not important. Has nothing to do with the name that you give us or the title that we have. It has to do with what you say is valuable. I'm very disappointed to be the chairperson and we say we are going to dissolve it. But I'm not. I I did expect it. When you go through and look at what we did do, it definitely is greater work done than what you didn't see. And what you did see was the veneer. And when you only look at the outside, you can never understand why people are feeling so upset about being left out. It's our job to make sure that all are included.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Kuiper. I reside at one seventeen Park Street in Adrian. First time speaking in front of a government board, so if my voice quivers, bear with me. Uh, thank you all for the work that you do. Some of us, we work together with community events. We do business together. We're friends on Facebook. And so I thank you as a resident. My family and I have been here for five years. We have four beautiful teenagers. And looking forward to that, that grocery bill dropping as they go off to college. And so we live here, we've planted ourselves back here. When I socially transitioned a couple of months ago, that had been a plan that I put into place for several years. I was looking for safety. I was looking to see who I could talk to, what steps I could take. And when at levels of government higher than the city, when laws were passed that would protect my job, would protect me, then I thought maybe it was safe to be true to who I was. And I recognize that when you step into a role of government, of leadership, you have a humongous target painted on your back. I was a minister for about ten years. And so I recognize that when you're in that position, people are going to say things that are not kind, that are not encouraging. And I'm sorry that you have to go through that. I would ask, though, that in a time when our nation seems to be, or there are at least many within our nation who are very vocal against certain groups because of what they look like, because of what they wear, because of a religious perspective. When we see laws and things that are being passed in the Supreme Court that feel like they're moving in a direction that it's not healthy, that we, as a city, recognizing that there are some things that are broken and that I don't know the whole story, that we instead of doing away with something that can help to mitigate, is there another thing that we can do to look at how can we fix what's broken? Is there something else? Is there one more step? Is there one more way that we can continue to work to create a place where minorities and majorities feel safe to be who they truly are? So I would just ask that we reconsider, and again, without knowing the whole story, that we reconsider doing away with the commission, the HRC, and what can we do to fix it? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Cheshire. I live on Chandler Street in Adrian. Having a humans right, we're sorry, Relations Commission might be hard work when getting it started. However, when was the last time that you heard of something worthwhile being easy? No one is asking for a fight. We are asking to have a commission that is specifically focused on our human rights and making sure we are protected in our city. If at the end of this whole discussion, the community asks for the HRC to stay, in my opinion, it would be your duty to keep it as the community is the is who the HRC is here for and who they would be asking to have help them. At this time, I, as a member of the LGBTQ community, wouldn't be comfortable coming to the City Commission to voice any of my concerns, whether it's due to some being self-described as cold or because most of you do not reflect most of the Adrian population. The entire HRC is diverse and that experience is who I would be comfortable speaking to. In addition, it is extremely difficult to do a good job while focusing on too many tasks since it's regarding human rights and protections. It is a hefty job that needs focus. That is what the HRC can provide. If you need more encouragement or more ideas on how the collaboration can go together, I invite you to look at the Ann Arbor City Commission website. They have a great HRC there. Thanks.
Hello, Bill Swift. I am not a resident of the city of Adrian. Like Greg, I'm from Tecumseh. I am the Chair of the Lenawee County Democratic Party, and I noticed there was some talk about politics. You know, this issue raises some some troubling issues and makes people upset and and maybe, you know, people say things that are hard to hear or challenging. But one of the things that I want to say is to hear one of you speak about Amanda's words for social justice in the context of ending the Human Relations Commission is pretty gross and disgusting in my view. And the reason that a lot of these organizations exist that you would wish to push back on and say, you do it is because they don't have any choice but to exist. And that's one of the things that I think is missing from some of your perspectives is this idea that you can throw up your hands and you can walk away and you can say, well, this doesn't affect our community. Now, as a resident of Tecumseh, I have said to a lot of people, boy, I sure wish we had a Human Relations Commission. I've attended some of the things down here in Adrian and boy, they sure were beneficial and I learned an awful lot. Thank you. Thank you so much for putting those things on and educating me. Having said that, you know, what a Relations Commission signals, right, is institutional support for the principles that it backs and why it exists in the first place. And to throw your hands up and say it's too hard, you know, this is this is lip service. This is performative to say these words of somebody who is actually out there fighting, who's been pilloried in the the country, been threatened by people who's had their lives threatened. It's gross. Another thing that's a little odd and a little gross to hear is to hear one commissioner speak as though they speak for all minorities in the city of Adrian because they are themselves a minority. Well, that's just not true. It's not true. And your perspective is valuable and 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 sharing it with people is good, but to suggest that, you know, somehow or another, you provide insulation and a barrier and protect other people on the commission, this is false, false reasoning. And those people stand on their own and the job is hard. I get it. You're asking for to, you know, to have a lot of people say things about you. I get it. But you know, you can easily make that go away. All you had to do is resign. Or you can do the hard work, which I, you know, I think the community would appreciate you doing the hard work. And that's why I think there's so many people here today that are speaking to it. And as 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 somebody who chairs this party, you know, I know that my membership here would definitely be supportive of this thing continuing. Thank you so much.
We want to do something about it. Blight is covered by other organizations, other governmental organizations. There must be other rules in the state and so forth about trash and whatever else goes into blight. It seems like if our value is to look at issues about a particular topic, in this case, case the HRC, it needs to be here. Yes, there are NGOs. What if they go away? And that's part of their mission, but they may go away. So it seems like if our values are in supporting all of our residents and understanding the issues that the government is supposed to help with, the city government is supposed to help with, that the HRC really needs to be a part of city government. And that if the HRC goes away, that also says something about city government and what our values are too. So I certainly don't know all the ins and outs of the HRC. Now I'm much more curious about how it can work well for all the people who need that in our community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Hennigan. I'm a city resident. I'm not going to repeat what everyone else said, but I I am in support of maintaining the HRC and fixing the problem, fix the problem. Many of you don't know, but the NAACP, when we were advertising and put our Juneteenth celebration together, we received a number of hate and threats during the time, the last few months. You don't know that. Yeah, we have all these groups that's going to do the work. The NAACP, we are here. We have state and national support. And we will be here to do what we need to do, but the city needs to be involved as well because these things are happening in your city. Thank you.
Hi, Yalanowitz. I'm a resident of Adrien. I'd like to reiterate what President Benke said about the ordinance, including the group of people that was seemingly excluded. We need to put our LGBTQ plus people on that ordinance. I'm also opposed with eliminating the HRC. It's it's, you know, we need inclusion and equality here in Adrian, and we need to advertise that. And what we're advertising by getting rid of this is that maybe we're not going in that direction. So that's it.
Hello, Rudy Flores, two two three Budlong Street. I feel like every single person that I am standing before has done some great work, are some great people. But I also feel that our underserved population in our community, there are also a lot of great, great people that have that don't have the opportunity to have advocacy on their behalf. The Human Relations Commission, I was around when we had the discussions about forming the Human Relations Commission with Mayor Jacobson. And it was always meant to be the little brother, the little brother, little sister of the City Commission. And I'm tired. I know a couple of y'all stated that you're tired. I'm tired. These folks here, they're tired. We're tired, but I'm tired of, maybe my tired's different than y'all's tired. Because I'm tired of being resilient, having to be resilient. I'm tired of being disappointed but not surprised. And I just would like to see just some action taken on some things that I mentioned back when we were talking about the street closures and things like that. And somebody made a comment about the optics of it. You know, I have the opportunity to have conversations personally with some of y'all. And through those conversations, I gain a little more insight, a little more depth, a little more clarifications to help me understand and wrap my head around why decisions are made. Nobody needs to explain to me how the city government works. I can figure that out. The only thing that I need an explanation for is why we just aren't working together to advocate for the people that cannot advocate for themselves. With the Human Relations Commission, that was an opportunity. I mentioned a while back about looking through a lens, that lens that allows you to look and see things not from, not a political lens, but a human lens that allows you to see humanity as it is, you know, and I'm going to ask you to do that again. Just please look through the lens, but also y'all had seven different human lenses with the Human Relations Commission. Thank you.
Ben Marmen, City of Adrian resident. So I wrote something because I didn't expect to speak today, but who do you help? Me, my husband, the M Society, every single member of the LGBTQ community, every person of color, the homeless that you decorate the city around. It's too political. My husband and I's moral character, our love, our rights to live and to be married is up for political debate every single day without anyone even getting to know us. You're quoting from the dead of the communities that the HRC serves while our communities do all the work to keep our people from dying. You're saying it is too political for a political position to work together while my husband and the groups that we serve get death threats and FBI reports. I came to discuss how important it is to include the LGBTQ community in this ordinance, but I'm standing here disgusted and enraged at how much audacity you'd have to have to try to dismantle the HRC when you didn't even pay attention when they were telling you what they needed. But sure, you can go ahead and decide to put all of this back onto our hands. We're exhausted and need the HRC, but we'll keep doing it all to keep people alive so that you can't quote them someday while you're pushing to hurt more people. Your duty is to protect your constituents. And if you think dismantling the only central group for it in Adrian is the appropriate decision, then I don't think you are fit to serve. Leadership is hard work, and you're very lucky to not have had to learn that art of leading because you didn't have to watch people die and keep dying if you didn't do something. How lucky you are to not be the keepers of your dead friends. So if it is too hard or too upsetting, then I think that the city commission should be dismantled instead. We can find groups to pile all the work on. Thank you.
Public comment for Zoom participants is now open. You will see the time on the screen and just to reiterate, please state your name and address. Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and our regular meeting will begin at seven twenty. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for July third, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Commissioner Hell.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move the adopt consent agenda. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hellt with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please. It was Miller, wasn't it? Yes. Okay, who gave a second on that? Yes, it was Miller and Strayer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted by unanimous vote.
Moving on to the regular agenda, Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-two is from the city commission. It is a resolution to clarify the effective date of the appointment of the city clerk. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-three is from the city commission. And before I ask for a motion to adopt it, I'm going to hand it over briefly to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl Verardi, not Verati, because it says on our agenda, so please fix that in your motion. But I came to work for the city in our community development department in December of two thousand and twenty-one and has really distinguished herself in that role. When the position of treasurer came open because of Julie Hill's retirement plans, we knew that Sherry would apply because before coming to our city, she was the deputy treasurer and raised in township. And so we're very excited to be able to have somebody who is a known quantity and a great asset to the city, move up within our organization and help us out in a new role that fortuitously she's very well qualified to do. The interview committee was unanimous in their support for her in that position. And I hope that you will follow my recommendation and appoint her as our next treasurer this evening. Thank you.
So Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-three is from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint Cheryl Verardi, V E R A R D I is the correct spelling, to the position of city treasurer. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gaus with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted with the change to her name being Cheryl Verardi is approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to public comment, we will begin inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. When we are all finished, finished inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Ben Negron, one fifty-nine North Madison, Adrian, Michigan. I am going to take a leap of faith here and assume that W has been approved. Yes, thank you. On behalf of the Ola organization and Jose Antonio Negron, Pastor Jose Antonio Negron and his wife, my mother, while Lupe Maria Negron, we wish to extend a deep gratitude, sincere appreciation for the thoughtfulness. It took a little bit. There's some understanding back and forth. It is truly representative of the good work that you do do. It took a little bit, right? There are some language barriers, so let us not be myopic and or broad stroke. No one likes that. This is a true case where the city commission helped the resident. Thank you very much.
Benke, two-five-six Ironwood Drive. From what I understand, the commission department heads will be present to craft the upcoming strategic plan. But there's one very interesting data point that I wish you to consider. The key players sitting at the table providing input to the strategic plan will not be a majority of City of Adrian residents. While the mayor and six city commissioners are required to be residents, our city administrator and ten of the eleven department heads do not live in the city of Adrian. Therefore, only eight of the nineteen or forty-two percent of the individuals will be Adrian residents. While department heads have a choice to invest in other communities for their homestead, we as residents of the city have made a commitment to live here, and we want the resident voice to be at the table. There's a clear gap when it comes to working in a community and living in a community. We need a strategic plan crafted by a larger percentage of Adrian residents. Commissioners, I ask you how you plan to expand the voice of participants sitting at the strategic planning table. You spoke about this tonight. You were very interested in making sure that only the voice of Adrian residents got through on the survey. I would ask that you consider members of various boards that serve planning, library, zoning, DDA, or Main Street. Consider the Adrian Public Schools or Madison Superintendent, both Adrian residents. Consider the library director or assistant director, both Adrian residents. Consider leaders of our service club, also Adrian residents, that choose to live in our city. To have anything less than a majority of Adrian residents involved in the process devalues those of us who choose to invest in the city and make Adrian our home. And I'll leave with one last note, that the takeaway I have is that rather than update the one line of the ordinance to include LGBTQ plus, the, for the community, the commission has chosen to discuss the elimination of the HRC.
I will now open it up to Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, you'll see the three-minute time limit on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing none. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I'm not going to talk about anything that was previously discussed tonight. I just want to go over some things that we did vote on in case you weren't aware of some of the things and some great things that are happening in the city. So first of all, the First Fridays Committee is putting on Americana this Friday evening in downtown. Please join us. That would be great. Island Park is starting to get looked at again, and we hope to get that grant going. And we will be purchasing or we approve purchase of playground equipment down there that is vastly needed. Use of some ARPA funds. I know we don't always say where the money is coming from, but I do know that that's coming from ARPA funds. The Bollards are approved tonight, and that will take several months to get installed, but it will happen this fall. The market electrical work, in case you don't know, we do have bathrooms over there now, so we, those are going to be open for First Fridays and other events. There's a lot of wonderful things going on at our market area. We approved consumers' lights going on in the northeast side, Tusnet, that kind of area all the way from here up to, not all the way, but many of the streets from here up to Siena Heights. So east side lighting is getting addressed. Our pickleball courts have been widely popular, widely, including my husband taking it up for the first time on Friday, but very popular. Parish Park, basketball, extremely positive feedback from them. These are all the good things that are happening within the city. Tonight, we heard a lot of negative and a lot of tension, and I do recognize that we have to sit up here and listen to that, and we need to listen to that. But I want to remind everyone, there are so many good things that are happening in the city. That's my comment.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.